Seven fifty, that gets us the hardware, that gets us the setup. Uh, to remove, um, to approve the payment of the removal fee and for the increase in the budget from, for, um, printing expenses from the approved one thousand, one thousand five hundred, because it is more money now for it. And that'd be for the remainder of twenty twenty-three, and to authorize me or perhaps mayor to sign the agreements. But I want to add one more, in talking to Brad prior to the meeting, I want to get clarity before we go. Utilizing ARPA funds, I want to make sure we've met all the ARPA requirements. So I would request this motion be made, but contingent on ensuring through legal that this is in fact, um, approved with the purchase of ARPA.
Okay.
And that we've met all the requirements. Like, we don't have to, for instance, go for three quotes on this.
Right.
The reason I haven't thought we need the three quotes is because we have to implement service agreement.
Right.
Now that ARPA's involved, I want to make sure all the Ts are crossed and I's are dotted.
Okay.
I used to be in the business, copyer business from Benota.
Yes, sir.
It's an extreme cutthroat business. I mean, the reason you would want to get some quotes, because they'll drop the price, drop the price, drop the price to get the business. Uh, and they're, they're just notorious for that. It's super cutthroat. Uh, if that, if I throw that in.
Sure, absolutely. And that's why I want to make sure that we have everything pulled together on that. Alrighty, so we'll just start from the top. Um, if council wishes to get a motion to approve the purchase of the copy machine using the ARPA funds at thirteen, one forty-seven fifty, assuming that the passes it through legal. Yeah, it's a some legal muster, yes.
I'll make the motion.
Alright, Elizabeth has the first. Absolutely. Alright, Stan has the second. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Um, second, and then another motion that will approve the payment of the removal fee as proposed, and increase our expenditure in the budget from a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars for the remainder of the twenty twenty-three printing costs. Get a motion?
Alright. I'll make that motion.
Alright, Tom has the first.
I'll second.
Alright, Alex has the second. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. And finally, to authorize our town administrator to sign all copies purchased and service agreements as proposed by, uh, Toshiba.
I'll make it.
Alright, Stan has the first. Tom has the second. All in favor? Unanimous again? Thank you very much. Alright.
Thank you.
Um, yes, thank you very much. So, that concluding our, uh, new business. Do we have any questions on either the new business from council or from the public? Okay. Um, old business, going to thirty-nine Main Street update. Um, no, no new information on Beckham House. Uh, we're still working through the condition quotes and, and materials. Um, but I, I don't have any updates on Beckham House at this point. Yes, sir.
Uh, I talked to my book man, uh, Bun with the fish race here.
Mm-hmm.
And they're gonna send somebody over Wednesday to look at it, see if we need to, to, uh, do we get it?
Alright.
I'll go by a little turn, that turn pass control and get a quote, get them to come over too. Uh, they seem to know what they're talking, what they're doing. They, they ask all the right questions.
Good.
Okay. So they'll be here Wednesday. I'll need to get the key to it.
Okay, well, alright.
They're gonna be here nine o'clock, and so, but need to come Tuesday?
You can come Tuesday, you can come nine o'clock, I'll be here.
Okay. They'll be here nine o'clock Wednesday.
Excellent. Um, on the back parking lot, so right now, we're still working on the punch list items. Many of those same things that I showed you on the list for last month. We, we literally had almost three weeks worth of rain.
Yes.
And they just, it just, nobody's been able to do anything. Um, talk to Public Works, uh, earlier this morning, um, earlier today. And he is gonna try to get some stuff done this week, things like striping. He's gonna try to, um, get the conduit put in for, for replanting the poles. Um, one thing that he is gonna do, uh, this week that, that we discovered during the construction of the parking lot, is for some reason, there is a void, some kind of void up underneath a pavilion, towards the left-hand side if you're standing in the parking lot facing Main Street. They went ahead and made a pressure cut during construction to see if that would, if that would relieve some of the cracks that were getting out there. But when they, when they punched, when they cut it, they could see that there's a little bit more of a void. So they're gonna come out here and they're gonna pull up part of the pavilion and then report the filling that void that has started to form up underneath it.
Was that from while the rain was there?
Uh, this looks like, no, sir, it looks like it's older than that. Um, you can see the way that the, the pavilion has literally just cracked almost like that. And they just need to get in there and look at it and, and see. And the plan right now is to, is to, is to pull up the part of it that's cracked, fill in the, the void where stuff has settled, and then re, re-concrete. And then we'll have to stay off of it for two or three days while it cures. And we'll check the calendar and make sure we don't have any rentals out there, which we typically don't. Uh, but we'll, we'll block it off and everything, but it's just, you know, they're paying attention and being diligent about their work and saying, hey, we need to check into this. Doing something, that little something didn't work, and now they're gonna go ahead and poke around some more.
Um, have you got a list of all the things that we need to have done?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Most of it is in that third tab that I handed y'all last, last month. And then I've also got a couple of other things that are, that will be added to that list, so we can keep track of it. Either for Warp Group to do it, or Public Warp's to do it, or us to do it internally.
When you, when you have, if you think to, when you have that conduit put down for the lights, keep in mind, this lady's gonna be coming here to put her fence in.
Mm-hmm.
So you need to make sure that the, you don't run the conduit right there to property line.
They, I don't, I don't think they are. I think, if I'm not mistaken, the light poles are gonna be in the little alleys that are sticking out. So it shouldn't even be on the side of the sidewalk these days beyond. I don't think.
It's worth asking.
But it's certainly worth asking, yeah, absolutely. Um, but other than that, as far as the parking lot, it's mainly just the punch list that, that we're working on. And that's, you know, doing the sides, moving out around the container. Um, I did see that Clement's put the privacy screen up in between the two yard, in between the two parking lots. That looked really good. They haven't done the, the pit yet, but that'll probably be, I would hope later on this week. Just because they got that one done over there. Um, but as far as the parking lot, it's just waiting for the rain and everything to dry up.
Yeah.
Basically enough. Any other questions on the new business or old business?
I talked to breaking ground on the tin trees.
Uh-huh.
And they're gonna, they're gonna send a guy over here to look at it.
Okay.
And I, I thought they could do that today, but they didn't. I could have called them on one. But she said that, you know, they thought the trees were like a hundred bucks a piece, and it'd be a hundred dollars to plant them. That's about right. But you're not gonna get six-foot-tall trees, you're gonna get like twenty-pound buckets as opposed to thirty-pound buckets.
Okay.
So it'll, it's a season. It's another season.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So. Okay. So a hundred per tree plus a hundred per to plant them?
Two hundred bucks a tree planted.
And that's what their people planted?
Yeah. You figure half of that, a thousand trees.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Alright. Um, you think about planting, you know, us, us planting, we're having, you know, slave dig all along. You'd have your dirt amendments and that type of thing. Yeah.
Things they would bring.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, and, and if we planted, it may not be covered by their guarantee.
I didn't ask that question, but maybe not.
I have some question to ask.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll ask, we'll, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, because they do that.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah, oh, absolutely. And I, and, and we've done this before, and it has saved us a couple, three, four hundred dollars out there in, in replacement costs. We've had two or three things replaced over, over the last couple of years.
Go and check, see if Arbor Valley can do it.
Yep, sure.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yes, absolutely.
Because, I mean, I just, I, I told them, I laid it out there like, give them an idea of what it's gonna cost and what to approve.
Mm-hmm.
Like, the whole kit and the boot, yeah, different pieces of it.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, sure. Okay. Now, do you want us to reach out to you, or do you want to talk to Arbor Valley?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, I will.
Floyd, can you, um, add that to your list to ask Arbor, get a quote for Arbor Valley on the Leland Cycresses down here? Or Conifer Tru, doesn't necessarily have to be the Leland.
Privacy.
Privacy.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, any other comments or questions on our, on our new or our old business? Alright, you did. Um, public comments?
I need a street sign. Who marks William Circle? I don't know what happened to it. You know, the nice-to-you street signs don't let up?
Yeah.
And one day, I look up, there, there's no street sign anymore.
Oh, is the stop sign gone too, or just the street sign?
No, I think the stop sign's there. I'm not sure, but I stop every time because of traffic, but.
You wanted to say William Circle, right?
Right, yes.
Because we got two or three that don't say that.
Oh, they're right. You got, you got, oh, some black signs you made.
Well, we got some that say Highway five, and difficult word.
Highway forty-five. One of them says Highway forty-five.
Really?
We've got one that says the, um, what is it, the Red Community Center? I believe it's, it's the Red Community Center, I think.
I like that.
As one of them says, yeah. We had it replaced, you know, and it said, I think it said Red Community Center. Ms. Polly?
Yes, if you insist. I don't have a question, I just got a comment, kind of a thought in passing. And it's based on last week when you said, um, mentioned fairness, and Alex asked the question, what is it? And then you brought up transparency. I went back through, you can tell I got a lot to do, and looked at the, and I could find three or four places in the documents and in the ordinance that mentioned, uh, it mentioned, uh, one place was very, very vague. It said, somebody may do this, which mean you may not, which is very vague. The other one says, um, it mentioned direct relationships or implied relationships. One of them was the one we mentioned last week, which it clarified. And then there's another one, um, oh, I don't see it, but anyway, does it, what I'm coming at is, you've got all these documents and they not, they don't jive. And you mentioned during the, uh, foot, the one, the foots, the one you do when you get your contracts, the procurement?
Mm-hmm.
You would go do something with that. And it seems to me there'd be a place that you can kind of put all that stuff together, so that everything's, you can't change the chart, I know that. Everything would say the same thing, and there wouldn't be as much way to interpret different ways.
So, are now, are you talking about our ordinance, or are you gonna come out of policies?
You can't change the chart, I'm not talking about that. The ordinance, ethics ordinance, is one of the places I looked. And by the way, their term ran out two years ago. And so we don't have a ordinance committee, but we do have a ethics ordinance. And the other, I can give you the numbers on them if you want them, I just didn't think you cared that much to look right now. Uh, section one dash eighteen, and that's meeting procedure, and that talks about absenteeism and conflict of interest. There's no definition of any of these, except one, that tells you what that would be. And then the other one is section two dash, I mean, two, uh, point thirteen, that's in the Code of Ethics. And then to nine, ten, and in the Code of Ethics. And they just, I can see why there would be confusion, basically. That's my comment.
Exactly. So I think that once we get the words just qualified, that will put a lot of this side by side, and it will find the may or shall, or the, the, the wording that you, that you wrote, so.
And also definitions, because when it says one thing, family, for instance, could be anything. Now, you got families, you got blended families, you got all kind of families. So family now doesn't mean the same thing it did even two thousand and seven, when these things were adopted. Uh, one of them, one of us early in that.
Okay. Yeah, we, yeah, we could, we'll certainly go back and, and take a look and see if we can see, see what you're seeing and, and maybe try to clean it up. But I really think that once we can talk to Mini Code to get the clarification started, and hopefully that'll show us where the undefined words are.
But you did talk about a meeting about this, and so that would be a good thing to bring up at a meeting about it. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, just thank you.
Sure. Ethan, okay? Alright, Mr. Jones, the administrators, do we have home view council? Comments? Alright, sorry, y'all. Uh, public council, I'll start right here to my immediate right. Ms. Good?
I'm good.
Mr. Teagle?
I'm good.
Mr. Pardon?
None.
Mr. Church?
Oh, right.
Well, turns out this.
Mr. Jones, the light now.
Okay, alright, so thanks for passing the safe build in the copy machines, because there's two big things I can get off my, my plate, by the way. So appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, we use for our accounting software, Sage program. There's been some discussion about should we change it to say Quick Books or some other version? But quite frankly, I'm a little reticent on doing that, because it's sort of like reinventing the wheel and starting, and I'll back up again.
Yeah.
So, we have received notifications from Sage that we need to renew. We have currently the ability up until, um, February fifteenth to renew at half price. And that half price is gonna be under five hundred dollars. So that certainly falls under mayor's prerogative to spend. I want to bring it to council for this reason. Next year, that ability to get half price is going to be gone, and it will rise to nine hundred fifty, and possibly even more than that. So that's gonna be something we're gonna have to start budgeting every year. They have quit going with getting a blanket license, you have to renew it now every single year. So this may be a time as we go through the year to see if we really want to stick with Sage or not. But I think for now, we've already started the year, and I'm frankly, there's a little reticent about rebuilding it all again. So I'm just letting, first of all, council know that we're gonna have to do this for four fifty. Um, that mayor's up to five, but also it'll be coming up in the future budgets as well.
Yeah.
Just keeping everybody impressed with that.
Yeah.
Okay? Uh, also today, and then I'll be done, we were approached by the lady who does Barbie Beach. She is working now at Keweenaw County Special Olympics, and they have asked us if we are interested in putting our name on a T-shirt. T-shirt was right here. There it is, that's the back. And you can already see sponsors that are on the back, and they're asking us to be a sponsor. The reason, uh, here's the price range that we have. For a hundred to four hundred ninety-nine dollars, we can be a bronze sponsor. That puts us here, small friends, a hundred to four hundred ninety-nine. Why the distinction between a hundred and four ninety-nine?
Yeah.
I didn't talk to her, I don't know the answer.
Thank you.
But, since we're all together, price continues that for silver sponsors, five hundred to nine ninety-nine puts us here. And if we choose to go to a thousand or more, we get to be gold up here. Now, none of these numbers I've talked about are technically in our budget. So my question is, does the council have interest, and if so, where would you like to be?
What is it again?
Keweenaw Special Olympics.
Oh, oh.
So is Linda quick? Is she heading this up, or what?
I didn't talk to her. I was just given the price sheets. And I figured while we're here, I will throw it out there to see if there's interest.
Yeah, I'd get, I'd get clarity on it, uh, definitely.
I think we're gonna have to, sort of, the way that it was approached to me was that we're gonna have to start kind of going with it. That's why I brought it up now.
This is a one-time deal?
As far as I know.
We still.
Yeah, so she did not actually directly talk to me, basically, about it.
Yeah, we did.
We were all together.
Did they drop off a flyer or anything?
So it says, in fact, I got three of the same.
Oh, okay.
I can pass it if you'd like to see it.
You don't know anything about this?
I would say call, uh, Alan over in Turin, the mayor over there, and see if they know anything about it. See, I've been sent today, or I ain't cahoots with the Quakes.
Yeah, the, the Turin sponsor?
She indicated that she was working with ours, in this case. But again, I didn't directly have a conversation. Beau Ray is, who's listed in the bottom of this letter.
I'll ask him when I talk to him tomorrow.
Okay. Okay. So, should we say something contingent on the conversation? Okay, so it's to get them all T-shirts. No? I mean, I'm good.
Right. What's the due date for it? Did she give a due date?
There was not really much that, so when she came to, in the office, I was elsewhere.
Yeah.
Right? So.
That's a twenty-sixth of right.
Oh.
I normally wouldn't bring something up like this, but I think that there is sort of a fast move on this thing. Yeah, it's to, uh, get all the participants' T-shirts, the athletes and the teachers and the, and the volunteers.
Yeah.
So that's, it just.
What's the town of Barbie Beach?
No, she's the lady who owns Barbie Beach, that's the person she wants to write. Maybe she has a family member or something that's affiliated.
T-shirts for special awards.
I don't see her on here at all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know. It's Barbie Beach.
Yeah, she's on, she's on the T-shirts.
Yeah, she is.
No, no.
Yeah, but that's, but there's, that doesn't say she's doing it, that's just, she has my number. I just don't see her on there. Who's Beau Ray? Y'all knew Beau Ray here?
Nope. Sure not.
CCS, uh, he's the local coordinator of Special Olympics.
I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be opposed to being a bronze sponsor, so if it.
None either. I mean, I.
If it helps them out, it just was a little. I recognize it's kind of fast, but it kind of got popped on me, and I'm trying to.
Sure.
I think there's probably something on this. It's under the mayor's, uh, right, under this spending you could authorize. A hundred and four hundred and two, and it's authorized as one sponsor, and that's fine. It seems like it, you know, Special Olympics, I remember being involved with that when I was in high school as well. Everyone gets a shirt, you know, for the day, so.
Uh, y'all threw me off with that Barbie Beach thing, but.
Yeah.
I see her.
I guess she's just the messenger. She's the messenger.
The guy who's the coordinator is apparently the school, or school assistant, because he's got a county, county screen, email address.
Yep.
I'm just trying to figure out if guys will cheer or not.
His name's Charles Ray.
Yeah.
No way.
I don't know.
I'm sorry about that. I got no heart, but I'm good.
Yeah, but she just, she all decided to do something wrong.
Yeah.
Got one of those.
With the prongs and just skipping under the.
Yeah, I think, just keep it under that, because it seems like the right thing to do.
Okay.
Maybe just give him a call, you know?
Well, I'm gonna talk to him, but I wanna, I'm sort of on a roll around.
Your mom's a sponsor, so.
Oh, is she?
Yeah.
There you go.
It's probably legit.
What was that?
His mom's a sponsor, so it's probably legit.
Charlie's spot.
Yeah.
There you go.
So we'll just keep it under prongs and.
I don't know.
About on prongs.
That's okay.
Good deal. Alright, so for mayor's updates, I do have a couple of items, um.
No offense, mayor, but I gotta split it. I'm, I'm five minutes past my deadline.
Ah, okay, no worries.
It's not because you're doing mayor's updates.
No, 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 that's fine, that's fine, that's fine. Um, so this past week, or within the past week or so, uh, DOT has approved our twenty twenty-three L-MIG, Local Maintenance Improvement Grant, money from DOT. Uh, if I remember off the top of my head, it's about six thousand in state funds with about thirteen hundred in town funds for our map. So we have a total of seventy-three hundred dollars from twenty twenty-three L-MIG. That's, that will be added to and available to us for, um, minor road repairs, striping, signage, and I think I included sidewalks in there. Um, as part of this application, they approved the money that we spent out of nineteen and twenty, which combined the sidewalk work, which combined the storm drain replacement, which combines two sign orders, and then also some paving off of Sunset.
Yeah.
Um, they have approved that report. We have submitted, like I said, for striping, road repairs, signage and sidewalks for twenty-three. But what this has brought us to, it's gonna change how we're, internally, how we're doing our minor road repairs. Previously, whenever something has come up with roads, we've just said, oh, we'll let SPOSS pay for it. Well, SPOSS, we can spend on multiple things. Recreation, cultural and historical events, road and infrastructure. So we can spend SPOSS on lots of things. Um, L-MIG, however, can just purely be spent on local ma, local mileage improvement.
Yeah.
The, the striping, the potholes and the stuff like that. So what we're gonna start doing is for the smaller repairs, we're gonna start paying those out of L-MIG, rather than trying to take small chunks out of it, out of SPOSS. It just, it's gonna make it easier on us. It'll help us spend the L-MIG a little bit quicker, because we did roll nineteen and twenty into one year, got an extension, and then, and we did end up using and spending it down. It would just make it easier on, on us internally if we could spend down L-MIG as we go, rather than trying to go back and figure, okay, well, we can do this and we can do. It's just gonna be easier to do it. So that will be an internal, I think, policy change that, that we're gonna start implementing, just as we are, are paying the bills. Um, but what L-MIG does bring up is, what other improvements do we want to do? Um, I want to bring to council, it will, we will have the actual reviewing, the bids and everything in for next month, but I want to get Main Street and Tarrentine restripped. It's roughly about, I think, sixteen thousand linear feet of lines between all four lines. Um, I've got one quote from a county contract, and I'm gonna have two others hopefully come in before, uh, before, at the March meeting. Um, from there, I'll just come to you and say, we're gonna get these two roads striped, it'll be this amount, and then we can, we can pick the contractor and hopefully have the, the two streets, um, cleaned up and restripped. And that will really improve, I think, the visual of, of, of a little bit of downtown. The other thing that we're gonna have to do before we strike the roads is we're gonna have to come back and, and use a vodobrager and clean off the edges of the roadway, just to knock off any dirt and whatnot. Up on Tarrentine, right there by Miss Peggy Lind Beckham's house, we've got a lot of red mud and junk that is washing out of their driveway, coming down the street, getting our speed bump, and then going into the side and, and down into the ditch. And the fix for that is gonna be to, I think, put a, a little bit of an apron right there for Beckham's, just on our right of way, we're not gonna have to, I don't see us making a, a real big apron. But then put a load of rock down to catch that erosion and red mud that's coming off. Once we put that down, I think that, that we can, we'll have to come back and, and pull up part of the edge of the road, because we've got some roots coming up underneath it. And I would like to talk to the county about how they suggest fixing it. And basically, I'm just talking about fixing Tarrentine from the red mud driveway down to the speed bumps. And either do either some grading, or do, we have to put in a little bit of an apron or a little bit of curbing to, to redirect the water off of the roadway.
Yeah.
We're gonna start looking at it, because it's just gonna continue to wash, it's just gonna.
Do they have a clogged ditch? Are clogged culvert in there?
They, they, they don't have any culverts at that part. The first culvert doesn't come until you get down to county terms.
Yeah.
Right down there, so there's, 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 there's no.
It's just a washout.
It's just a wash.
Yeah.
And it's just, it's, it's clogging up and it's catching, and, and before we come in and have them, I at least want the county to look at it before they come in and, and do the striking.
Yeah. I like that.
Yeah.
Um, what do you mean by a bid? You're probably building a.
An apron.
Apron.
So.
The berm or something.
Yeah, kind of, so you know how, okay, so you know how you've got the curve that comes up and then it flattens out for you to, for you to drive the car over? And the apron's usually only about like this, and it's got asphalt or whatever on the other side of it? That's what I mean. It's just a, it's just an apron.
Yeah, like a.
Okay. Yeah, and, and honestly, it would really be there to help hold in the rock, because it's really, what the real cure is gonna be, put rock down on the driveway.
Right, but if you don't do. Right, but if you don't do something, it's just going to wash the rock out.
See, exactly.
Yeah.
And I at least want to get the county to look at it.
We couldn't, we couldn't use a grater and just dig a, dig a trench? And then put a.
We proba, we probably could, but we've got a light pole right there between the two locks, and the water meter is just to the north of the light pole. I think, and so my fear would be that if we cut the grater blade down in there, we'd hit something or snatch something, or two dollars, what? But it, it may be that it's, it, it, it's, it, the, the correct fix is just to cut a ditch. I don't know, but I, I need to get them to look at it.
Yeah.
They can tell you.
Yeah, they'll build it.
They can tell you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm just, I, I, I'm a little hesitant about the.
The apron and the curving?
Yeah, because.
Yeah, yeah, me too, a little bit, but I just don't know what they're going to say. But I went out there and I was scraping at the dirt, and we have about this much asphalt up underneath. The, the dirt is right there, we have this much asphalt up underneath it. So we've got some edging that we could, we could attach to, and we can, we can go.
So let's, yeah, let's help them out and give them an idea, give us an idea of like what we need to do, and then we can address it.
Yeah, but they, we've got quite a few, I say quite a few, I, I know we've got some culverts, I don't think driveways are, are plugged.
So I called, anytime you see one, just call me and give me the address. If it's on the highway, DOT will come in and re-plod it, if it's a city street, we can get the county to come out and do it. I've already put one in for one fifty-eight, highway one fifty-four. I noticed in the big rain, a couple driveways up from yours. Um, but that's the only one that I've really seen. But if you see some, gi, give me the address, and we'll, we'll send them out to fix it. Um, the, we have the librarian, part-time position is posted, it's on the website. Um, Floyd, have you got any, any, uh, resumes from it?
Does you?
I put out a call the other week on my Facebook, and I got, I got a couple of hits on it, and I got a couple of resumes in. We haven't called anybody in or, or done any interviews yet. Of course, we'll, we'll get one of y'all to sit with us on the panel. Floyd and I probably have been one of y'all. So that is out there, so if anybody here or anybody out there knows a good librarian, send them my way. The position's on the, on the town website.
What is the, um?
It is fifteen hour, the, the.
What's the question?
The librarians pay an hour's.
Twelve an hour.
Twelve an hour and fifteen hours a week.
Okay.
Uh, right now, it's Tuesday, Thursday, two to six, and then one Saturday a month.
Okay.
And of course, whoever, uh, ends up taking the position, we have some flexibility as far as the opening times. I would like to keep at least one Saturday a month, if not more.
Right.
Um, and of course, my hope is that as we, um, build up and, and start doing more stuff at the library, we'll have more people come around, we'll have more demand.
Right.
Um, the other side of it is, I think there are some ways that we can update and upgrade our library space to make it a little more usable. Right now, we can fit about twelve chairs in the library as it is, as it is set up. Part of that is because we've got two, actually, we have four back-to-back bookcases that are sitting in the center of the room. If we could take those bookcases and rearrange them, not get rid of them, but rearrange them in the room to open up that floor space, we can get the twenty twenty and twenty-four chairs in the four, like, floor plan of the library, which will allow us then to possibly rent it out either for small classes, nonprofit meetings, support group meetings, just more stuff to happen at the library. And it will also take a little bit of the pressure off of the community center because we are rapidly approaching, we're probably, we're, we, we have instructors and classes in here four out of five weekdays. We are renting three out of four weekends a month. And so, we're not maxing out this space yet, we still have a little bit of flexibility. But the time is, is starting to come for us to begin thinking about, thinking about additional space for events and classes, a community facility, basically.
Well, the first thing you want to do is look at, look at what you're charging for the, for the place now, if you're, if you're, the point where you're, you're, uh, sold out, jack your price up.
Well, we're pretty, we're pretty competitive, I mean, we're not, I mean, the prices, I, I don't think we need to adjust the pricing.
The pricing right now is, is two hundred for six hours or two fifty for six hours?
Well, yes, it's about, it's about two hundred if you don't have alcohol, it's a good thing.
Two fifty if you do, so we're hitting two fifty for six hours.
Yeah.
Don't we have some people that have been in here for quite some time that haven't had an increase in rate?
Um, so our instructors, our legacy instructors, I don't know when they have had an increase, but we have increased their compliance on payments, so we're getting more money in than we have previously. Um, but it's.
So they're, they're paying you the old, they're now they're paying you the old rate.
Mm-hmm, yes. Pay the old rate consistently. Um, as far as the new instructors that are coming in, I'm pretty sure it's market rate. Um, but. So the library improvements, we just, just, you know, we just need to be thinking about the upgrades, um, thinking about the different things that we could do up there, and then just ways to make it happen. The other part that we need to think about is parking around the library. We're going to have, and the part of the reason I wanted to get the, this parking lot striked, is I wanted to start looking at how can we do some striping up near the library to add a couple of parking spaces. Um, at least in the front, but also leave room for loading zone. But go ahead and start plotting and planning that out, because I'd like to have that plan ready for the strivers' park.
I'll bet you a dollar, if you start looking at, uh, putting in parking places up there, you really don't have room for a couple.
Yeah, probably through.
What you're going to have to do is you're going to have to have a handicap parking spot. So basically, you're going to be putting the handicap parking spot. There's nothing, there's no other room for anything else.
Um, yeah, and that's one we'll have to look at, because I thi, I think we can probably do, well, I don't know.
Look at it, but we need to adhere it.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, you could angle them, as opposed to having them parallel to the street.
Mm-hmm.
And that would give you an extra.
Mm-hmm, and then that may give us, and, and maybe that extra would be, maybe we do the handicap one to where that one is parallel, but then we have the other three at an angle behind it. And then that handicap becomes not only handicap parking, but also a loading and loading zone.
Can you mark any, any parking spaces down the driveway too, uh?
Um, I think so, but I would almost rather wait until we do, until we renovate that part before we add that, because I honestly think that, that there will be other improvements that we made through there.
Well, I think you have to take it a day, cause I'm thinking.
Yeah.
It's, I, I just, I can't, I can't bring myself to support building parking places for something that has no demand for parking places.
Right. But we'll put the parking places in before we begin to push that should bring more business. And, and whether, and whether we fill those parking spaces up or not, it'll improve the look of the town, and it'll improve the look, especially in that little area, and if we have the new stripings up there.
Some Russians had a term for it, it's called Potemkin.
Potemkin?
Potemkin, yeah, look it up. Um, how much money can you get out of that library, uh, having people come in?
So, if we rented it out three nights a week for like an evening group meeting or, or session, we could probably get fifty to a hundred bucks a night.